For the Village of Bartlett Board Meeting for July 5th, 2016, I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's?
Here.
Cammer?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Deanie?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. We requested Pastor Tim Chin of the Village Church of Bartlett do our invocation this morning, this evening, Pastor Chin.
Will you bow your heads and join me in prayer? Father, I thank you for this city board. I thank you for each of them taking their role seriously, for them desiring to do their very best for our community here in Bartlett. I also thank you for the mayor, who just exemplifies servanthood and just desires to be an example to this community. And Lord, I pray for those that speak tonight, that you'll give them clarity, that they will present their information in such a way that everyone can understand. I pray for the decisions that might need to be made tonight, that the very best decisions, the wisdom and the welfare of this community is first and foremost. And Lord, I just thank you for our community servants, such as our fire and police officers that serve us so faithfully. Lord, thank you for this meeting. Thank you that we can be here tonight to do business for the people that are loved and cared for in this community, and we give you the honor and glory, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Chin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item this evening is the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk on your agenda will be enacted in one motion under the consent agenda. There will be no separate discussion on these particular items. At this point, is there anything that any board member would like to add to the consent?
Mr. President, if there are no objections, I have the 125th Anniversary Bartlett Park donation. I think we've discussed that at length. I think we're all in agreement, and if there are no objections, I'd like to add that to the consent agenda.
That's fine. Anybody got anything? Okay. Anything else?
Mr. President, I'd like to add items A1 and 2.
I think I have some questions about A1.
Okay. So A2, Brewster Creek Business Park Lot 9B-1 Greco Warehouse, that's, everybody's good with that? Consent?
And...
Fine.
Mr. President, I'd like to add F1, Spalding Road Quiet Zone, Eagle Z and Global Recycling Alternative, alternate access.
That one should not be added to consent. There's a sale portion of land that requires a little higher vote requirement.
Okay.
So, there's a few things combined in that agreement that I think it should be voted on separately.
Good try.
All right.
Anything else? Hearing that, I'll introduce, entertain a motion to amend the consent agenda to include the minutes from the board and committee meetings on June 21st, 2016, the bills list from July 5th, 2016. It'll be amended to add under planning and zoning Brewster Creek Business Park Lot B9B-1 Greco Warehouse. Also adding under finance and golf committee, the 125th Anniversary Bartlett Park donation, license and ordinance, National Night Out Tailgate Party Amplifier Permit, Zomaya Amplifier Permit Request, Perique Amplifier Permit Request, Personere Amplifier Permit Request, and Regency Oaks Amplifier Permit Request. Under police and health committee, consent will also include U46 School Resource Officer Agreement. So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Hopkins, seconded by trustee Cammer. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Ranky?
Yes.
Aaron's?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Deanie?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now entertain a motion to approve the amended consent agenda.
Moved.
Moved by trustee Aaron, seconded by trustee Hopkins. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Deanie?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
The motion carries. Next item we have this evening is treasurer's report, there is none, and the president's report. Two items this evening for the president's report. One is an additional appointment to the police pension board. There's an attached application, Mr. John Sias, who works for, I believe John Edwards, has applied. I've talked to John, he's a very qualified financial planner, so he's agreed to a two-year term on the police pension board, and I believe we have one more spot on that board. So if anyone has any suggestions, please get them to my office. So, he's a financial advisor.
John Sias will be a great addition to that board.
So I appoint John Sias to the police pension fund board of trustees, and I would entertain a motion to agree with it.
Second.
Moved by trustee Aaron, seconded by trustee Deanie. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Deanie?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaron's?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item we have this evening, under the president's report, is the Heritage Days Class D liquor license request. They've attached a liquor license request for September 9th through the 11th, 2016. Everything was in order, and I would entertain a motion for the Class D liquor license application.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Cammer, seconded by trustee Deanie. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Carbonaro?
Yes.
Deanie?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaron's?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
The motion carries. I hope to see everybody at Heritage Days. Next item we have is questions and answers. Does anybody have any questions for the staff? If you have any questions. If you have any questions for Valerie, you gotta yell really loud.
I have a few questions, one for Mr. Dinjas. In our memo that we get once a month, you talk about jetting the verto restrictor. Can you elaborate a little bit on that? Because I've seen it a few times, month after month.
Sure. The MWRD lift station that discharges to the MWRD treatment plant has a, there's a manhole that has a grinder and a bar screen. The bar screen gets plugged, so we have to go through and jet that, because that's, I think when we went out and did a tour, the Devon plant was actually online, and it was a day like today where it should not be online. It was because the restrictor got plugged and caused water to go towards the Devon plant. So, we do it regularly, just to keep it clean and make sure that it, try to avoid that from happening.
Is that our responsibility, or is it MWRD?
Well, it's their responsibility to clean the bar screen and the grinder, but if they don't do it, it impacts us, it doesn't impact them. So we call them, and they'll get out there, but sometimes it's not right away, so we've gotten into the habit of just making sure we clean our line to make sure it's clear, then we contact them and say, hey, you need to stay on with the screen, making sure that screen stays clean.
Yeah. Is it time consuming to do something like that?
Um, I mean, I think it might take them a couple hours, you know, by the time you get set up and do it and head out.
All right. Thank you.
And also, Mr. Dinjas? Go ahead.
I wanted to bring to everyone's attention, including the papers, that the Bartlett Police Department, if not were for the Bartlett Police Department, the Fourth of July celebration in this village would be much different. And I want to congratulate Chief Williams and your entire staff, because I'm sure every single one of them was on duty during the Fourth of July celebration. Our fest is unencumbered, I like that word, unencumbered with the problems of the day. It's kept quiet, it's kept under control, the policemen are fabulous. Being a member of the committee, I can tell you that we rely upon them quite a deal in transference of monies, and the police department was never anything but most helpful, most courteous, and just a delight to work with, and I congratulate you.
You're too kind, thank you. I'll pass that along to staff, thank you very much.
That comes from the top. That's not something someone invented.
Yeah.
So you should be very proud.
Thank you very much.
I sure am.
Anything else? Dan, could you give us an update? I know a lot of us have heard, this is probably a decent time to ask about the water situation in Elgin.
Yes. Actually, Tom and I talked to Kyla Jacobson from Elgin today, and the report is that the water that's leaving their treatment plant no longer has any taste or odor, so now it's just a matter of clearing the system. So, we would expect in the next day or two, especially with the man's up right now, that issue will hopefully go away.
Okay.
Good.
And is that, was that a factor of it just running its course, or is there something they did differently?
They increased their carbon, they increased their treatment process to try to counter it. They added more of their well water versus the Fox River water, so they've made adjustments, so that's all helping. Unfortunately, from time to time during these seasonal changes, the conditions were right this year to, not a lot of rain, hot weather caused the algae to bloom, and we ended up getting that. But I guess it's been a few years since we've had this issue before, so.
Thank you. I would, I think it would be good if things like this happened, because especially situations like that, that part of us are completely unaware of it, because it only affects a certain part of the village. So if we're getting like a number of calls, I think we need to send something out from staff, just saying, hey, here's the deal, you know, because it was kind of backwards. We were getting calls, and then we had to scramble around and try to figure out what was going on, and it'd be better if you guys were starting to get some calls to shoot something out to us and say, hey, you know, this is happening. Yeah. Okay. Thanks. Anything else? Next portion of the meeting this evening is our town hall portion of the meeting, gives the audience an opportunity to speak to the board. Please step up to the podium. Try to keep your comments to three minutes. We don't have an egg timer, so you're on your honor, and just please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Judy Mills. I live at 701 Holly Drive here in Bartlett. This, I believe, is my fourth time here for the same issue, so I wrote notes, because possibly I didn't cover issues of importance the other times I was here. The ordinance of weeds, I live next to the little pond at Holly and Devon, and they don't maintain it very well. The weeds are probably as tall as I am. We share a common ground. I have a fence, your weeds are on my fence, and they're coming in my yard, and I can't keep up with them. When I go to the ordinances of Bartlett, the ragweed thistle growing in any lot or tract of land in the village is a nuisance, and there are thistles, I don't know other weeds' names, I can identify a thistle, they are there, and they are this tall. Unlawful to permit weeds, grass plants, to a height exceeding eight inches, they've done that. All vacant lots or open land shall be graded and maintained free of brush, so they may be mowed by the employees of the village, they do not do that. All vacant lots or open land shall be mowed a minimum of a 50-foot strip back from any improved lot. I believe, I live on an improved lot, so I believe we should have 50 feet apart. We don't, it's not maintained. I'm a widow, I've been doing most of my own yard work, I'm unable to now, I don't work, I take care of my mother, who lives in Bartlett, she is going blind, and I have a developmentally disabled sister who lives with her. Medical, medical, medical is all. So I'm very busy. I will hire a company to help me with my lot, after you please take care of yours. I cannot afford to do this many times, I'd like to do it once. I am a 30-year resident this October in the same home, and it was not like this at all when we moved in, it was very maintained. And now, they let the weeds grow, and they call it a wetland, and that's not a wetland, it's a weed land. Wetlands might have some natural growth, this does not. They're not, I can see when Clark comes and they spray the pond across the street from my house for mosquitoes, they don't do any mosquito abatement on the water that is owned by the village of Bartlett. So I believe there's several issues here that need to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do you want to give a comment now? Do we know what area that she's speaking about?
Yeah. We will, we'll make sure that we address the, cutting down the weeds immediately.
All right. And you'll make sure you let us know if it's done, yeah?
Do I call you?
You jerked it.
Do I, let me say, sorry, call you, all right?
Um...
A lot.
Well, you handled it pretty well.
Yeah, I come here, but I also call, so it's, it's more than that.
All right. Do you know when it was when it started getting, you said it was good when you first moved in?
When we first moved in, it was beautiful. Children would go there and use it, you could see the animals, it was always cut down, it was nothing like this.
Something changed.
It's an eyesore.
Okay. All right, thank you. Go ahead.
I'm sorry that I'm late. I called the village this morning to find out if there would be a meeting tonight. I was told that there was going to be no meeting tonight, that the next meeting was going to be on the 14th, on a Thursday.
Hmm.
Or I would have had many people here. I live at 2...
Yep. I believe that would be the plan commission meeting.
Pardon?
The plan commission meeting meets the second Thursday.
Okay. Well, I'm calling about the water issue. My name is Pat Bullman.
Could we have your name and address, please?
Yes, I'm just giving you my name, Pat.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
All right. Pat Bullman, B like boy, O L L M A N, and I live at 259 South Park Place Drive. I've lived here for 10 years. I've never experienced anything like what I've been going through with the water situation. I've been many times in touch with Tom Ruzika. Is he here this evening? Hello, Tom, and he knows. He's been very kind in offering me all the information he knows. However, I've also talked to the EPA out of Elgin. I lived for 25 years in Mount Prospect, never had a problem, of course, it was Chicago water. I don't understand why we've not been notified about this, about, you know, this meeting, this subject coming up tonight. The first I saw in the paper, I don't get the Daily Herald, I just get the Examiner, and that was on the front page of the Examiner. The fact that you had taken a vote and decided without any meeting or feedback, that you were going to instead switch over to 100% of the Fox River. I've talked to about 10 people on my block, they're all horrified. You know, I lived in McHenry for two years, that was enough, because the water was so bad, that you couldn't swim in, and it was worthless, except for boating. And, you know, we need to know about this. This is reminding me of the situation in Flint, Michigan. I buy nothing but bottled water, I use baby wipes, I haven't had a shower in two weeks, I do, I'm sorry, I won't bathe in it. If you touch it, your hands, there's definitely something that's also affects the skin. Now, I notice that, you know, like men seem to be not quite as aware of it as women, you know, as far as the taste of it and what have you. But I have had many, many calls, you know, with the EPA, and her name is Callie Jacobson, who's the one that's handling this on the, for the village of Elgin. And she's been very nice, but she can't give us any information. She said she doesn't know, you know, that it could be, she just doesn't know, they don't have an answer for this. Well, it's really incredible that you have to pay for a water bill. I mean, I don't use the water, except in the dishwasher, and for washing clothes, with soap and what have you. But I heard, you know, some, some conversation was evidently going on, but I missed that, I'm sorry, because I didn't know about the meeting, I don't know how I got the wrong information. As I said, are we having a meeting specifically on the water situation? I belong to the senior center, I talked to them today, they're very upset. All their lunches, everybody's complaining at their, the lunches that they serve, and I think we definitely have to have a meeting with the senior center. And also, I have a neighbor that is head of maintenance over at Claire Oaks, they're all complaining, and nobody knows anything about the cure. And, Tom, is this the blue-green algae, or?
I believe it is. What we're tasting and smelling is actually a byproduct of the algae. The algae itself is easily removed through their normal treatment, but it emits a byproduct, I apologize, I don't know the name of the chemical it actually emits, it's on the website, I know, I could look that up for you. It's noticeable in just such minute amounts, that it passes through all their barriers, and they are, I don't, I'm not exactly sure what Kyla told you, she, this isn't new, they've dealt with this for a long time. This year is very extreme, I'm not gonna lie, it's very widespread and extreme this year. Like Dan mentioned, the conditions were favorable for it this year. They deal with this actually pretty regularly, but it usually doesn't get to us, thankfully.
Mm-hmm.
It does, it hasn't passed years, and this year it is a tough one. But they are, she's very cautiously optimistic that they're on it at the plant, and it is, you know, it's through adding more activated carbon for odor control and blending more well water. They're, I believe they can only do a 50/50 blend is what they're capable of, and that's what they're at, to try and maximize the...
Well, I want to know what's going to happen to our property values. I was a realtor for 20 years. This is something that has to be disclosed.
I understand your concern.
And people are not going to be buying our homes here, if this is not, so the idea that possibly we could save some money by using Lake Michigan water, is this the case? I mean, I'd like those figures, I'd like a...
Ma'am, I don't want to, your three minutes are way over, but that's okay, we understand what you're asking about. We've had many, many conversations about this, and we've had dozens of meetings about the water choices. Nobody really was interested in coming to those meetings.
Nobody knew about them, that I know.
Well, the ones that are on, you can go through all of the minutes, you can actually listen to them, we can point them out. Paula, can you identify which ones they are, and you can just go onto the website and listen to what conversations were had about the water situation? And that, that whole water decision is not final yet.
Oh, well, that's very good.
Is not final yet.
Do you not think that we should have some type of, more of an educational meeting?
Well, I think that this latest event is going to cause a reason for us to have some more conversations around it, yes. But I, what we did find out is that the same situation does happen with Lake Michigan water as well.
I, 25 years of Lake Michigan water, never once.
In the last 25 years, they've had 11 cases, and have been displains for 27 years, it's on the front page of the newspaper. It's not unusual, it's just that they're very high levels this year because of the warm spring that we had.
But this is going to continue with the climate change, this is going to get them better.
That may be, but it's not, it's really not going to affect your house values, because you know what, I sold my house and displains didn't do anything.
But it's been over, what, now, two weeks or three weeks?
Yeah. It takes time to clean that up.
We'll make sure that we get you the information on what we've discussed about the water. Those discussions really don't have a lot to do with this latest event, they're just about decisions, but there's a lot of information there about the options that we were provided.
Are you familiar with the alga situation? The alga bacteria?
No.
Alga?
No, alga, A-L-L-G-A. And this, by talking to enough people, you get a little bit from one person, a little bit from another person. And the people that you gave me, Tom, in Geneva, that do the water testing, when I talked to them about the alga, when I went on the website, the alga is something that can stem from this, if it's not, it can develop into this. And the alga is extremely harmful to all of the organs, to your liver, kidney. And when I asked in Geneva whether or not they were testing for the alga bacteria, he said, no, we don't, because we're not, they don't require it. Well, that's not an answer, as far as I'm concerned.
Ms. Bullman, I'm gonna, we got your information, so we'll definitely get you the information that we had on discussions, but this isn't the form that we go back and forth and answer questions. You have an opportunity to talk to the board, it brings up some great points, and we'll take those, acknowledge those.
Well, I'm certainly concerned, and there are large groups of people that if they had known, they would have been here.
Yeah.
They can still come to the board.
There's nothing on our agenda tonight about water.
Okay.
There's nothing on, yeah. So when it, when it, just check the agendas, there will be coming up, most likely second week, second in July or first in August, it'll be coming up.
The 14th?
Sixteenth.
On Thursday?
The 19th.
On Thursday?
Next meeting is July 19th. 14th is a plan commission meeting, and then there's a meeting July 19th, and then there will be another one August 16th, are the next two board meetings.
So then, who can I talk to that can go out to do some educational, you know, meeting with the senior center, because they're very interested in having a speaker?
Ma'am, I'm Paula Schumacher, you can give me a call tomorrow, and we can set that up.
And I'll talk to you, because I didn't get your name, so.
Oh, Paula.
Paula. Okay, thanks.
I'm the only one, so you can thank me.
Thank you, Mr. Bullman. Anybody else to address the board at this time?
Hi, my name is James Personera, I live at 488 Knoll Crest Drive, I've been there for 10 years now. This is actually my first board meeting, I find it all extremely fascinating, and having addressed both of my concerns within the first 15 minutes here, I just want to express my thanks. We're obviously in good, good hands with the board, and that's all I had to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the board at this time?
We take compliments, too, don't we?
He just, he just gave us one.
Standing committee reports, planning and zoning committee, Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two items on the agenda this evening. Number one is to establish a special service area for the Bartlett Ridge subdivision, and I'll turn that over to Jim.
Thank you, trustee Ranky. I have put up on the screen the map of the Bartlett Ridge subdivision area, which also encompasses the special service area. This special service area has been proposed to be established, has went through the process. We went, and after the proposed ordinance, we were in the 60-day period. After our public hearing, the 60-day common period has expired as of July 3rd. Now you are faced, or have the vote, or have the ability to vote on the special service area establishing the Bartlett Ridge subdivision special service area. It's $976,044 is the bond amount for the potential of that. It's for the 49 total lots, of which 45 are single-family homes on 13 and a half acres, and I'll be glad to answer any questions about it.
Is this basically for the detention area for the Bartlett Ridge subdivision?
It's for the storm water system. It's for both the detention as well as the storm system, and this is a backup special service area. And it, this is a backup special service area that the developer is the first one to maintain the detention. He installs it, he maintains it. They create a homeowners association. Part of the homeowners association covenants and requirements and responsibilities are to maintain that stormwater detention system as part of their development obligations. And in the event that the homeowners association fails to maintain the stormwater system, then the village, this backup ability to enact a tax levy on that subdivision in this particular area, pay for the maintenance of that storm system. Or if it's really fails, you could create a bond that would cover the, the maintenance or repairs of that. And that's essentially what it's for. Again, it's a backup. We've been doing this for a long time, and I don't know how many we have, but we've never enacted one to this day.
Truth be told, from a practical standpoint, it isn't worth the levy of it to pay for maintenance. But if retention ponds muck up and fill up, it can be quite an expense. So it's really for that big-ticket item. Maintenance, and it's not just the detention basins and retention ponds, it's also for the storm sewers themselves. So you don't really expect the association to be in there maintaining them. Once we accept the public improvements, we'll be maintaining the sewers themselves, but it's really a source for the big expense of dredging a pond or something of that nature.
How does this detention pond compare to Huron's Landing? I know we're having quite a bit of issues with the Huron Landing detention pond.
This, I mean, from a size standpoint, obviously, this one's a lot smaller than that one. This one is built under our current stormwater system. Dan can address that, but they're using best management practices. The bottom has kind of a wetland area, so. And I don't think there's any liner or anything like.
Yeah. Aaron.
Go ahead. I was just gonna say, Jim's right. They have to follow the stormwater ordinance, meet the requirements, and, and they do meet the requirements. So it, I mean, although the subdivisions are different sizes, therefore the ponds are different sizes, it meets the stormwater requirements.
The other is, Huron's Landing is very unique. That was a situation with a leaking detention pond, and the developer went bankrupt, and we drew on the letter of credit, or, yeah, it was a letter of credit in that instance. So it's just a much different situation. There actually turned out to be, as we discovered in the process, a connection between the underground mining in the areas. They would draw, pump some of the underground mines. It actually had an impact of drawing the water out of the pond. And so there were all kinds of things done to try to stop the leak, but, you know. So it's really, that pond is, is unique compared to any other retention ponds that we have.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm just a little confused. This says the DuPage County Stormwater Ordinance, that's in Cook County, is it not?
Yes, but we use, we use the DuPage County Stormwater Ordinance requirements village-wide. So when there's a subdivision development in Cook County, they have to maintain, they have to design the stormwater system in accordance with the DuPage Stormwater Ordinance. It allows us to maintain what they call a partial waiver community, where we do our own engineering review and analysis. But that's been like that for quite a while.
Okay.
Okay, if there aren't any other questions, I move to approve ordinance 2016-.
51?
51. An ordinance establishing special service area number one for the Bartlett Ridge subdivision of the Village of Bartlett, DuPage, Cook, and Kane Counties, Illinois, and authorizing the levy of an annual maintenance tax and the issuance of bonds to an amount not to exceed $976,044 for the purpose of paying the cost of providing special services in and for such area.
Second.
By trustee Ranky, seconded by trustee Cammer. Forgot my chairman there. Is there any other discussion? Harry Namb, the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Daaney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaron's?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Mr. President, the only other item we have, item number two, was addressed on the consent agenda, so that's all we have for planning and zoning tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Ranky. Next standing committee report is our building committee chairman Hopkins.
Thank you, President Wallace. There is nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, Chairman Hopkins. Next item we have on standing committee reports is under finance and golf committee. Chairman Daaney.
Mr. President, that we had the 125th anniversary of Bartlett Park donation. That was covered on the consent agenda. We have nothing else for this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Daaney. Next item under our standing committee reports is the license and ordinance committee. Chairman Aaron's.
Thank you, Mr. President. All of the five items under license and ordinance have been taken care of in the consent agenda. We have no further business.
Thank you, Chairman Aaron's. Next item we have on our standing committee reports is the police and health committee. Chairman Carbonero.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two items tonight. The first one we have is a reconsideration and amended contract with Williams Architects for new police facility.
So procedurally, the first issue is the motion to consider if somebody wishes to do that, based on emails from trustee Ranky and discussions with trustee Hopkins and others separately.
So we need a motion to reconsider.
Yeah.
I move to reconsider the Bartlett Police Facility Architectural Services Contract approved on June 21st, 2016.
Second. Second. Moved by trustee Ranky, seconded by trustee Hopkins. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Aaron's?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Daaney?
Yes.
Motion carries. Who wants to give us an update on changes of this?
You have before you an amended contract from Williams Architects. One of the concerns raised was the 7.25 percentage charged for basic services. In the amended contract, the, that has been reduced to 7%. And the minimum cost for those basic services has also been removed.
This contract was negotiated with them when? This amended contract?
The amended contract was negotiated, I believe, two days after the board meeting.
So what, but. I know there was some concern with the percentages that were being paid out. So we're very, we're very confident that even though there's been a reduction in the fees, the contract will be fulfilled to, to its max.
Yes.
Yeah.
I guess one of my, my biggest concerns about the percentage is where is, where's the incentive for the architect to save money? Right? If they get 7%, I understand that there's a floor and there's a ceiling. But if we're bumping up against the ceiling, where's the incentive for them to look for cost-cutting measures?
Well, I think that's why we have all the stopgap measures that we do have. We have the construction manager that's doing some value engineering right at the very beginning. We have our owner's rep that is also looking for those cost-saving measures to act as a, a buffer to that. I don't believe that we have an adversarial system set up, but we do have one that watches for that. And we, you know, do expect this project to come in on budget. And that is something that, you know, we've made clear from the very start.
I would say also that I've done a number of architects' contracts over the years, some with Williams, many with others. There's always a percentage of basic services. Maybe that's a flaw in the system, but that is a typical, in every AIA contract and even non-AIA, which is American Institute of Architects form contract, owner-architect contract, there is a percentage of basic services. You still have control of the budget, so as the cost is down, the fee is down, particularly with, where the minimum that trustee Hopkins raised has been removed. So I, in the memo, you also have what other towns have charged for police stations. Also looked up the Bartlett Fire Protection District. That's a little bit of apples and oranges, but it's the same type of public safety building where there's, it's a niche and it's a specialty that not every architectural firm handles. And so you'll see that it's below most. And last time, looking at the minutes, I went on and on about this contract and how it's set up. But there are a couple of things here that are different. You don't have a blank, clean slate of property, which makes it more complicated and, and also raises the fee. I know trustee Ranky raised a private project, which had a significantly lesser fee, but in the area of police buildings, this is the range. And that's what I tried to get across with the, the state ranges for what those contracts should be within. So it is within those ranges. I won't say more. You raise a good point. It's the system, though, and you don't see architect contracts that don't have a, a percentage for basic services.
So this isn't something that we can do on a purely hourly basis?
No. I've not seen, well, I've not seen any architect contract, other than very small ones, on an hourly basis. And certainly, there are no police stations that anyone's done on an hourly basis.
Is there any way to send us out to bid?
I don't believe bidding works on architectural contracts. So that statute that I raised last time is generally apply, it does apply to all non-home rule, home rule municipalities, and there's a process by which you rate them. You don't even get to talk about what the percentage of the fees would be. You rate them first, and then you try to negotiate a contract wherein you get to the fee, percentage, and other terms. And if you can't reach agreement, you go to the next highest-ranked architect that was in this RFP and RFQ process. So one of the problems is there's no, there's not a building that you're bidding on to construct. It's their professional abilities based on what they've shown you on other projects, where you rank them, because you, one architect would be bidding a different building. It's not apple, it could never be apples to apple, because they haven't designed it yet. So, and what happens is, once you rank them and you've established a relationship with an architectural firm or an engineering firm, then you don't have to go through the process again. But again, it's never a, where you're shopping fees in that process. And in fact, if you're non-home rule, it's not even allowed. As a home rule, we can argue that that statute doesn't apply, but this, it's not really, doesn't really work to bid. Guess what? We've got this big project. Who'll do it for 5%? Well, there's architects out there who haven't done one perhaps before, but there's a lot of specialized things within the police station, lockups and things, where you want them to have experience. You don't want the first-timer, the weekend warrior, the guy who's doing it on the side who'll do it for less, yes, but that, that could be a disaster.
We looked at their past police facilities that they've built, and have they stayed on budget?
Yes, actually, they have a reputation for coming in under budget. We've toured their sites. We've talked to the departments that have worked with them. That was part of the early vetting process that we went through with the four, the four companies that made the shortlist.
They were standout. When it came to credibility of building a quality project under bid, at or below bid, as compared to their peers, that was a big part of why we went with them, is because of their reputation in the industry of having happy cities with the budget process.
Technically, I think what we should probably do is take a motion to vote down the previously approved contract.
Yeah. I mean, you're reconsidering the prior resolution and the prior contract that had the 7 and 1/4% and the minimum fee. So now you've reconsidered it, it's on the table. So there should be a motion to approve that. And if you aren't, if you want to get to the next contract, you would vote no on approving the original contract, if that makes sense. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
We want to approve the resolution for the amended owner-architect.
So right now, your, what's back on the floor would be the resolution that approves of the contract from the prior meeting of, what was it, April?
Does everybody understand what he's talking about?
I'm sorry.
So we're actually gonna vote on the original contract?
Yep.
And if you don't, if you want to change to the new contract, you need to vote no.
Right.
If you want to not change, you need to vote yes. Entertain a motion to.
So moved.
Motion to approve the original contract for Williams Architect.
Aye.
Second?
Second.
Moved by trustee Daaney, seconded by trustee Carbonero. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Ranky?
No.
Aaron's?
No.
Cammer?
No.
Carbonero?
No.
Daaney?
No.
Hopkins?
No.
That reconsideration, and the motion does not carry. Now I will entertain.
Well, the motion to reconsider carried.
Yeah.
The contract now.
A new contract, we need a motion for.
Yeah, right now we do, but then, the old contract did not pass.
Right.
On the revote.
On the revote.
Sorry.
I moved to approve resolution 2016-53, a resolution approving of the amended owner-architect agreement between the Village of Bartlett and Williams Associates for the new Bartlett facility, police facility.
Moved by trustee Carbonero, seconded by trustee Daaney. Is there any additional discussion?
I'd just like to make mention of one thing.
New contract.
When I received this, I want to thank staff for going back to the architect and working with them in the reduction of costs. I think staff did an outstanding job. I was very impressed with this new contract that we looked at. And also, with the $38,000 to $43,000 that we'll save, I, I think we found the money for the Free to Be Me Park.
Any other discussion? Harry Namb, the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Aaron's?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Daaney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
No.
That motion carries.
And I believe that's all I have, Mr. President.
Do you have one more? Oh, no.
About the same.
Thank you, Chairman Carbonero. Final standing committee report this evening is public works committee chairman Cammer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight we have two items under public works, first being the Quiet Zone slash Eagle Z and Global Towing Agreement. As we discussed at the last committee of the whole meeting regarding the proposed quiet zone, we have prepared a replacement easement for alternate access and sale agreement with Eagle Z Properties LLC and Global Recycling Repair Corp. that relocates their driveways from Spalding Road to Lambert Road. This driveway relocation is required per the ICC and FRA in order to qualify for the quiet zone. We currently have a quiet zone out to bid, so that we can coordinate with the scheduled metro crossing improvements. That being said, any other? Should I bring it to? That being said, I would make a motion to approve resolution 2016.
54.
54. Resolution approving the agreement to abrogate a permanent easements and temporary easements, grant replacement, permanent easement, and agreement to. easements, grant replacement, permanent easement, and agreement to construct access drive and purchase and sale agreement with regard to adjoining parcel among the Village of Bartlett, Eagle Z Properties LLC, and Global Recycling and Repair Corp.
I'll second that.
Moved by trustee Cammer, seconded by trustee Daney. Is there any discussion? Scott, how long have you been working on this?
Oh, wow. Lots of people.
It's been a long time.
Yeah.
Any discussion about the quiet zone?
How many residents do you think this is going to help?
Over 2,000.
Wow. Have you guys been constantly getting complaints about noise?
You know, we've been, you know, frequently, been in the neighborhood, um, traffic process, you know, and, um, you know, the, lots of nights we'll get calls, you know, especially the summer time, people's windows are open, they hear the train, it's a warm, um, you can explain, you know, the quiet zone here, the quiet zone here, it's not the stress that, um, you know, here, um, and here, but the discretion, even in the quiet zone, um, to blow the...
What's the timeframe on this?
Well, we're hoping for about 5,000, um, the entire project, there's the portion of the spurs that, you know, have gotten speed, and I believe that they'll be looking to do that in 2017, completed. But we want to do it right away because Metro's portion, they would like to do it this fall. So hence the rush for us to put that out onto bid so that we can meet their time schedule because that is a big convenience, not only convenience, but cost savings for us to do it in conjunction with them.
Thank you.
Anything else? And then the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Arons?
Yes.
That motion carries.
The second thing on the agenda tonight was the Harons Landing North Detention Pond improvements. And with that, because there was a little bit of information that changed over, I'm going to turn it over to staff for a little bit of education, so to speak.
Thank you, trustee Cammer. This, as some of you may know, has been going on a number of years. If you've been able to look at some of the things that Mr. Maraz put together, I think it explains it fairly well. But as we noted earlier, the pond had developed a leak. It wasn't apparent right away, and rather than going into the kind of boring geology, but there's not a whole lot can be done about it. The original developer, as Brian said, went out of business and sort of at the last minute, we were able to secure some funds to take care of this leaking pond, which ordinarily wouldn't be a problem, but sort of stormwater for free. But we felt that we'd like to pursue something because people had bought homes near the water and the levels had dropped. So after an attempt to line the pond with a plastic liner, that came in, one company bid on it, and it was way overbid due to the de-watering issues that had been sort of come about since it was discovered there was a link to the IDNR property and the mining in the areas mentioned earlier. So we were stuck with a pool of money and had to come up with the next best alternative. And we sort of used the original engineers to do that. We do have to pay them something, but actually, I think we got a lot of work done for free because they were on the hook. That was Mackey. So this is, this, we went out to bid. We had five bidders, as you can see. Probably 10 or 12 people picked up, so we had good representation. We put a lot of alternates in there with regard to the plantings and such because we had a feeling things might turn out this way. And it came in a little bit high. We were able to remove some of the items that are, they're not aesthetic items, so it'll still look really nice for the residents, and the pond will function perfectly. And that's a long way to get to what we're asking for is that reduced amount, as Brian has shown here. And that's kind of a long, convoluted story. I'd be happy to try to answer and...
Can you explain to us what a core log is?
Yeah, sure. It is a, it's a cylindrical matting made up of coconut shell or husk fibers, and it serves to stabilize an area. It disappears in time and you don't see it, but it serves to stabilize an area sort of between a bank and a water surface. It's a very expensive, if you've read any of that, you see it's...
$87,000 or $80,000 worth of... And by not having it, that's not going to be detrimental to the pond?
No, no. It'll probably, it'll probably mean some of the plants take a little bit longer. It's nice to have as a safeguard, but it's not absolutely imperative.
Okay. Any other questions by the board?
Just looking at the bid tabulations, Tri-County really came in low on all the items, or I should say, they came in extremely high on the items that were excluded by a pretty far margin.
Mm-hmm.
And I was just curious if you guys look at any of that and...
We do. We make sure that the low bidder is still the low bidder when the alternates have been removed or taken out of the equation so that, you know, you can, you can make sure the low bidder is the low bidder even at an adjusted amount. And the whole, the whole process was vetted and done according to the standards. I believe it's probably why the resolution is five pages instead of two because Brian had to set it up a certain way. But it's a good point, trustee Hopkins, and that, all of that was considered and debated before we struck out a conversation with the contractor, actually.
When Mackey Consultant originally did the detention pond, was there any flaw in their engineering?
I don't think so. I mean, in hindsight, we might look at this and say, you know, there may be in, I think that a lot of this stuff was discovered after the fact, you know, that they did what people normally do if they have a pond that doesn't seal up. There's a number of pretty expensive chemical treatments. They went through that. And just so turns out that the IDNR property, groundwater levels and just what's going on in the area, it's just tough to deal with. I don't, I'm not sure what else they could have done at that point. Today, there's a push towards wetland ponds, so that might, that's basically what we're going to have there now. So...
When the detention pond was being constructed, did Mackey Consultant, did they go out there and actually observe the construction?
Yeah. Yeah, they, they were a part of the, I can't remember who the original developer was, was it? Or Relin or Orleans? Yeah, they were on board from day one. And I know they were involved when the, when the leaking started. So it was up to the developer to pay for the treatments, but yeah, they were, they were involved.
Relin, I'm sorry, Mackey does much of the engineering for Bluff City?
Yes.
And mining and everything complicated out there. And this was adjacent to that. And so they were involved. There was nothing, in my opinion, wrong with the original design at all. It was kind of a fluke that you had a leaking pond. And they tried a number of fixes and we weren't satisfied. And they were actually very helpful in our success in drawing on the letter of credit, standing up and calling out who was their client at the time, the developer, for being wrong in what we had done. And that was pretty instrumental in us getting that original 323,000. Since they were familiar with it, we had them design it. So if you say, was there a problem? It might have been in that original number where the solution then, when all these chemicals didn't work, was the liner. Was, it wasn't the design that was the flaw. The fact was that we didn't have bid numbers then. Their engineer's estimate was on the low side. And then they had to de-water the pond to put in the liner, and that cost was a big unknown. And so it scared off a lot of bidders, and it also resulted in a very high bid that was way out of budget. So if I guess there was a flaw, it was, you know, how do we predict this de-watering cost? They then came up with this new solution where you're using some of these wetlands. So, you know, they've been helpful in getting it to this point, and we're familiar with the project, and we kept them on board. But they were hired by the original builder that went bankrupt. But they're, we're familiar with them. They do a lot of work for private developers, and they've done some for the village.
Thank you, Mr. Maraz. Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Any other questions by the board? If not, then I would move the village board to approve the agreement and change order between the village and the Tri-County excavation and construction for the 2016 Harons Landing North Pond improvements in an amount of $260,340.80.
Second.
By trustee Cammer, seconded by trustee Daney. Is there any additional discussion? Henry, now another clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Carbonero?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Arons?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
That motion carries.
That's all we have for this evening from Public Works.
Thank you, Chairman Cammer. Next item we have this evening on our agenda is new business. Does anyone like to address any new business?
How about a new compliment?
Yes.
Well, I didn't want to pile it all in all at once, but I do want to commend the Public Works, heads up Public Works Department for their cooperation in the Bartlett Fourth of July celebration. Again, without Public Works, there would be no celebration because those are the guys for the parade group, put up the road closed and do all that other stuff. And we got our radios from Public Works, and they just cooperate in any way. And not on behalf of the committee, but as a committee member, I truly appreciate all that help. Thank you very much, Dan.
You're done.
I had a few comments from residents just about the traffic. And one of the suggestions that we should bring to the Fourth of July committee possibly would be to figure something out, especially on fireworks night where we're busing people in from like Dominic's parking lot or something, just a shuttle back and forth so it doesn't get quite so jammed.
We, the committee has considered that.
Yeah.
And in effect, it's that, it's too costly.
Yeah.
And there's so many people that walk to the park. I mean, there's thousands that walk to the park. So there hasn't been a scream for it lately.
I heard a number thrown around this evening, around 35,000 people.
Any other new business for the good?
No.
The village?
35,000 people.
Yeah, is there 35,000 at the fireworks?
Unbelievable.
Is that what you estimated? 30,000 at the fireworks chief?
The cost of the fireworks themselves?
No, 35,000 people.
You know what? We were just trying to do a non-scientific from up in the crow's nest, and they'd take us like a 50 by 50 square and count, and then try and multiply. It was a total rough estimate, but it was, it was up there. It was in tens of thousands, yes.
But I have to tell you, Sonya said to me, "Oh, my goodness, the chief is here."
That's an all, that's an all-hands-end deck event.
Yeah.
Well done. Thank you so much. Any questions?
No, sir.
Let me ask Mr. Dinges. I know we've talked about the, is it Devon Basin? Is it Devon Basin? What are we going to do?
Well, the pond itself does have natural plantings, but I think the issue that she has is along her fence line, we need to keep that area mowed. And apparently, our guys haven't been doing that, so I'll make sure that that gets done tomorrow.
Okay, because, you know, when you first mentioned that this is your third or fourth time here, you know, it came back to me, and I think we've got to do something about this.
We will, we'll take care of it.
It's appreciated.
Anything else?
Yes. The last meeting, I brought up a question in regards to the senior remates. And I understand there's an ordinance that we have to change, so is that going to be on one of the upcoming meetings so that we can get that taken care of?
Yeah, we'll get it on another. Okay. We'll put it on a future agenda real soon.
Thank you very much.
We'll be moving directly into the committee of the whole meeting. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Arons, seconded by trustee Carbonero. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Arons?
Yes.
Cammer?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Daney?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.